Evening and welcome to the June 3, 2024 study session of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Jim Jolly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Jolly. I went with the "Jolly" on it. It was like a radio host. Right? Whatever. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 1,995th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, June 17, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that we are missing Councilwoman Toy. And moving on from there, I'm going to jump right into audience communication. This is what council has set aside 30 minutes for items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please make your way to a podium and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Kathleen McIntyre, Fairway Street, Livonia, Michigan, pulling out my clock again. Okay, as I started to say, and then I was running out of time, so I wanted to... There we go. I know Councilwoman Toy is not able to be here tonight. I know she's missed a lot of meetings this year, and nobody begrudges people moving, missing meetings for health issues. I hope she's okay. And nobody begrudges council people missing meetings for important family events or vacations that come up. But there does seem to be, at times, and this is not directed at anybody on this council, but at times, we go through periods where we don't have great attendance at meetings, and we don't have great attendance at committee meetings. Sometimes, we don't even have all the chairs, vice chairs, committee member meetings, and we sometimes have problems with attendance at public hearings. And there was a time, a number of years ago, when council members, a policy was put into place to dock council members if they missed more than so many meetings, and then that was removed because it was unworkable, and there were some questions about, I don't know, the legality, but how it worked. And, you know, I think that was appropriate. But I would like to ask that the council office publish every month the attendance of members at meetings, regular meetings, study meetings, committee meetings, and public hearings. The taxpayers pay the salaries, we all know. I know as well as all of you do. They're very small salaries for the amount of work that's done. But, you know, the minimum that taxpayers should get is good attendance at the meetings. And, you know, if there are reasons why people have not good attendance in a month, people can ask them why that wasn't. Again, nobody's going to begrudge people missing meetings for health, family vacations. But I think that would be good information to make available to the taxpayers. Thank you very much, and you all and Councilwoman Toy do a fantastic job. That's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other communication from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to go to council. Counsel?
Yes. It started. I just realized I didn't know exact time. So it's Passport to Safety is on Saturday. I know it starts at 10. I think it goes till 3:00. And it's over at Fire Station 1. This is a fantastic event. I'm so excited. After my coffee hour, my kids are actually going to come to this coffee hour with me because we're going to go walk directly to the fire station and do all the fun activities that they have. I know last year, they had... The most popular one was actually dispatch. My kids wanted to keep doing dispatch over and over. The fire trucks are out, the police cars are out, the kids can sit in them, they can do biking on a track that's laid out. Bushes had free food and games and other activities, live entertainment. It's just a really great time, especially if you have kids. But more importantly than just being a good time, it's also really educational, and it helps provide you with an opportunity and a platform to talk to your kids about safety, fire safety at home, stranger danger, how to interact with our first responders in case that there is ever an emergency, so they know not to be scared and they know where to go in case of an emergency. So if you have young kids, come check it out. If you don't and you just want to come, I'm sure you're more than welcome to. Have a good time.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Vice President?
Yes, I was remiss during the regular meeting as well. Not to remind everyone that this weekend is our Irish festival. And don't let the Tashnik fool you. I married into that last name. I'm actually 97% Irish, so 3% is a mystery, but we'll go with that. It does kick off this Friday, June 7, at Greenmead. That's opening night, and it runs for the weekend, and it is just a great event. If you haven't gotten up there in previous years, you shouldn't miss it. So the music's fun, the atmosphere is fun. They do a big mass on Sunday morning up there to celebrate, so just a great time. And you'll see me there all weekend, so.
It is an awesome time. Councilwoman Bezinski?
It's 10 to 2, and I'd just stay up all night because I said 10 to 3:00. So it's 10 to 2 for Passport to Safety.
You said 10 to 3:00 though before.
I did. I did. I'm correcting the record.
Anything else from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Oh, we already went to the audience, so we're going to jump right into our study agenda with new business. Item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Mr. Coogan to host a graduation party with DJ in the backyard of his home located at 19291 Lathers Street on Saturday, June 22 from 1:00 to 10:00. It's good to see you. This is, I gotta, you know, I'm going to give you an intro. So Joe is also on the Livonia Hockey Association. He's a Livonia Hockey Association coach. He's on the board with me. He's an awesome guy. He helps out. He was in our, he was actually on our team, Livonia All-Stars that got beat up. So we'll try again next year, but tell us about this party.
It's a graduation party for my twin daughters. They just graduated on Friday from Clarenceville. And just really wanted to cross all the Ts and dot the Is for the party.
We're going to help you out. Counsel? Councilwoman Donovanick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for doing this. It's always nice when residents have these block parties. I'd like to offer an approving and consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
We've been approving on consent, which means if you want to hang out with us on the 17th, you may, but your matter is all but approved?
I got a lot of yard work to do, so.
And I'll see you on the 22nd, I hope.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks for hanging out.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience on Mr. Coogan's graduation party? Seeing none? We're moving on to item number two, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Ashley Morris, Community Opportunity Center, to hold a company family picnic with a DJ at Rotary Park on Thursday, September 19, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Hello.
Hello.
Tell us a little bit about this.
I'm Ashley. I work for a nonprofit based right up the road here on Farmington, Community Opportunity Center. We house adults with developmental disabilities. We've been having a picnic at Rotary. I've been employed there for 15 years, so well over, like probably 20 years. We've always had, one of our residents is actually a DJ. He does it on the side for like a little income. He's always done our music for us until last year. We had a problem. One of the parks and rec person tried to shut it down. So we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and trying to have him come DJ from about 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Perfect. Now, just to ask, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., that's really short. You sure you want... Okay, just making sure.
As soon as they get to meeting, they hit the road. They're there for food and gone.
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving for consent.
You have an approving on consent? Are you going to be there?
I won't be there, but I wish you well.
Thank you.
Your matter, so you have an approving on consent. Again, your matter is all but approved to pass, but we'll vote on it on the 17th. But thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Any audience communication on item number two? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number three, which is the reappointment of James Baringhouse to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is, comes to us from Laura Toy, council member, for a three-year term that will expire on July 12, 2027. Councilman Jolly, I said you would fill in. I'm Vice President.
Yep, I'll make the motion after.
I've never met this gentleman. I'd like to know more about him.
Mr. Baringhouse, come on up to the podium, please. So because our colleague, Ms. Toy, is not here, it's a pleasure to act in her stead to introduce Mr. Baringhouse. Mr. Baringhouse has been active in our community for a very long time. He's added a lot of value. Some of us tend to watch the ZBA meetings more than others, meaning we probably all watch them. I don't know who else watches them, but Mr. Baringhouse adds a lot of insightful comments and diligent decision-making ability there. He's also added a lot to the city by way of the Green Leaf Commission, where he's been probably more noticeable and more active in our community in terms of the long-term health and wellness of our community as a whole. And I think we all know Jim, and we appreciate what he does, so.
Thank you very much.
Did you offer an approving?
I will offer an approving for consent.
Unless you want to grow him some more, but.
Very good.
Anything else from council? Vice President?
You know, just to kind of pile on a little bit to Mr. Baringhouse. I actually served on the ZBA with Mr. Baringhouse from 2021 to 2023, and he always impressed me how he actively engages the petitioners when they come and really wanted to fully understand their perspectives and concerns, and it was always impressive. Mr. Baringhouse exemplifies integrity on the ZBA, and we'd be fortunate to have him reappointed.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'd just like to take a moment to, first of all, thank Councilwoman Toy for bringing the, my renomination forward. Councilman Jolly, thank you for pinching this evening on behalf of Ms. Toy as well. It's been I have serving the residents of Livonia on the ZBA board. It's also been very rewarding as a member of the ZBA board to work with not only residents and owners on their ordinance problems and working through variances constructively so that these resolutions are not only fair to the neighbors, but to the community, and also they stay within the spirit of our zoning ordinances. So again, my thanks to the council, and as always, I appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And just for the record, we are working on laptops, so more news will come, and I want to have the right answers before I come back to you, so.
And to follow up on Councilwoman Bezinski's comment on Passport to Safety, please stop by the Green Leaf event booth at the event. We are raffling a 64-gallon recycling cart there. Enter. You don't have to be there to win. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any audience communication in regards to Mr. Baringhouse? Seeing none. We have an approving on consent. I'm going to move on to item number four, which is a reappointment of Gregory Coppola to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilmember Rob Donovanick for a three-year team, which will, three-year term which will expire on July 12, 2027.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovanick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Mr. Coppola couldn't be here with us this evening, but he's been a valuable member of the community for many years. He's been the chairman of the ZBA for many years, brings valuable experience from his business doings and all the things he's involved with in his day-to-day capacity. So I think he'd be a great renomination to the ZBA and to join along with some other great members. So I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Mr. Coppola's got an approving on consent. Oh, whoa. Had to check myself with item number five, which is a reappointment of Mr. Mark Rotundo to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilmember Scott Morgan for a three-year term, which is to expire on July 12, 2027. I'd like to point out, before I hand it over to Mr. Morgan, that we do have three Livonia All-Stars, and we did at one point. So again, he was part of the loss, and that's fine. We'll get him next year. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to just reappoint Mark Rotundo to the ZBA. He's done a fine job here in the past. Long-term Livonia resident, I believe, life, right?
Yep.
Been here your entire life. And he brings building trade information and a lot of background in the building, in the building trades to the table. And I'm happy to reappoint him for the next term until July 12, 2027.
Are you okay if that's on consent?
Yes, I'd like to approve him on consent, yeah.
Mr. Rotundo, do you have the floor? And you've got 10 minutes.
Jim's tough to follow up. He had a pretty good speech. But no, I'm excited to continue serving. I've enjoyed my time so far in the ZBA, and I look forward to serving the community. Thank you.
I'm just messing. You are an awesome addition to our community, and you and your family do incredible work, and we're super glad to have you, even if we lose every year. That's fine.
Mr. President, can we make sure the record, the minutes reflected, he's not a good hockey player?
That's your opinion? Mark, I didn't say that.
Yeah, Donovanick shouldn't be the one speaking.
Here we go. Well, you have an approval on consent. We'll get you out of here before he changes. Anything from the audience on Mr. Rotundo's? Seeing none. We're going to move on to number six, which is a request to approve support for legislation for the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, GEMT program. This comes to us from our Livonia Fire and Rescue in order to enhance our emergency medical transportation services and potentially secure significant additional funding for the fire department. Chief?
Evening, President.
How are you?
Councilmembers, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for your time. The Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program Coalition, which includes the Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Townships, the Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs, and our state lawmakers, have announced the introduction of House Bill 5695, which directs the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to enroll Michigan in the federal GEMT program. The program will provide millions in reimbursement funding to public emergency medical providers transporting Medicaid patients in Michigan. Myself and the administration is requesting that councils support this program in the form of a resolution in the hopes that it be signed into law in Lansing. This resolution will be added to those being submitted from across the state and those already submitted from Sterling Heights, Hazel Park, Ferndale, Madison Heights, Dearborn Heights, Harrison Township, and many other municipalities. The program provides needed funds to expand access to care, enhance quality of care, improve sustainability of care, and promote workforce retention and attract new members. With that, I ask for your support of this resolution and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chief. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief and I had an opportunity to speak about this on Saturday before the 5K, and sounds like a great, anytime we can have an opportunity to get some additional funding for our fire department, why not? So I'll offer an approving on consent.
You have an approving on consent. Anything further from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Chief? Seems easy like that?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for the plug for Passport to Safety. We'll see you all on Saturday.
See you Saturday. Anything from the audience on item number six? No. Moving on to item number seven. It's an award of contract. This comes to us from the Inspection Department. This is for the BSNA cloud-based software licensing and training for a total amount of $249,480 with a not-to-exceed annual increase of 5% from budgeted funds. Mr. Hannah, how are you?
Good. Good evening, Council.
Tell us a little about this.
So, yeah, we're, we've been working on this for about a year, trying to, to, this involves five departments, the software. It's not just for inspection. I just happen to be the lucky one to stand before you tonight. The, and we all currently work with BSNA on a day-to-day basis except for the Finance Department, and so the Finance Department will be joining in on this contract also for a portion of that. So with that, we would be asking for an approval to, for the amount of $249,480,000 to move to BSNA software, which is now cloud-based, which comes with a lot of upgrades to where we are currently. And then for a, an approval for a annual fee of $158,760. That's with the not-to-exceed 5%. Just so I don't have to come back every year for that annual fee. But that is, that again is not just for my department. That's over five departments. And we have Steve Rennell. He's a representative from BSNA here tonight. He'd be happy to share with you the benefits of this cloud-based software. And I've had detailed conversations with our IS Director, Casey O'Neil. He's here also tonight, so if there's any technical questions, he's more than happy to answer. And then representatives from, including myself, the other four departments, to speak to anything that you may have, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. It's always, hey, as a spokesperson, you did an awesome job. So I'm going to go to council. Mr. Donovanick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hannah, thanks for being here this evening. I do appreciate it. And thank you for the clarification that this isn't just for your department, but rather multiple departments throughout the administration. When we start talking about cloud-based, and I'm far from a technical expert, do we have to spend more money now for servers and to kind of support this system now since we're transitioning to a cloud? Or is this more of a question for Mr. O'Neil?
And he's more than happy to speak to that, but it does eliminate the need for the use of the server that we're using now specifically for BSNA. And that'll be run directly through BSNA software. It'll be backed up by BSNA software, and they will handle the security end of that also. It also, from my end, the huge advantage is not having the pinch point coming back into the server at City Hall for our live inspections that are conducted on a daily basis. And I'll be able to use anything, as long as I can get connected to the web, I've got access to BSNA, where that's not currently the way it's set up. I have to have access to the server.
So now it's one less thing that we have as a community to deal with is that server. Now it's going to be cloud-based, and BSNA will handle that on their end.
That's correct.
And you mentioned something that I think is very important for your inspectors that are out in the field when they're doing these inspections. So what you're saying, essentially saying is, as opposed to having to log into some sort of server and being connected, now they will be able to, as long as they have Wi-Fi access, they'll be able to access the cloud virtually anywhere in the city?
That's correct. The advantage is also, I'm from any device. I mean, if you've got a smartphone, you'll be able to connect to BSNA. So it leaves me with a lot more tools to handle the job, especially when, you know, if the laptop goes down for one of my inspectors, you know, we can be back up and going. We may be able to use iPads in the future, so it gives us a lot of flexibility.
And the BSNA software, can you kind of give us a brief explanation as to what we do? And what is your experience with it? I know I have some conversations and due diligence that this has cut down on foot traffic into City Hall because now, as opposed to contractors and what have you, having to come in to City Hall and file permits, now they can just go right online and do a lot of what they used to do in person virtually?
Yeah, that's correct. And we've really just started moving in that direction, and hopefully we'll move a little faster than we have in the past. And part of that, part of that is the goal of making it more convenient for the customers to be able to access our department, access any department that's on BSNA from their home or from wherever they can have web access. And again, it just saves time from somebody having to drive down to City Hall and to conduct their business. They, you know, hopefully they can do it from either their job site or the convenience of their home at any hour.
My last question, Mr. President, is are we worried being so all-in on BSNA? Is that a concern by other competitors out there? I only know of BSNA, but is this something that the city has already engaged in? We're so far down, down in this relationship that we can't really go anywhere else. We're confident that BSNA is the right person to partner with?
We, and I hate to speak on behalf of all the other departments, but in conversations we've had, we're very happy with the service that BSNA has provided over those 20 years, 22 years that we've been with them. We've updated alongside of them this whole time. And I see no, I don't know the percentage of communities that use BSNA currently, but it's an excessive number. And, you know, with that, I feel pretty confident with where we are with BSNA going forward.
Thanks, Mr. Hannah. Thanks, Mr. President.
Vice President, I'll go right to you, but I just wanted to touch base because I might be able to share some insight as well. So I've used BSNA. We have a cloud base in Northville right now. We use it, I use it from everything, from POs to general ledger to my time cards. Everything's online. It cuts down on paper. You can use it from mobile app. The only thing I will say, and I know our BSNA friends are here, make sure you do, I think it's an SSL sign-in, so you don't have to keep on sending the emails 1,000 times to the email because that would always be the authentication. But no, I can tell you from personal experience that BSNA is the best in this field, and the synergies and work that is provided in the software is unparalleled. So just giving some more context. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, Mr. Hannah, did you get the short straw or the lucky ticket? But anyway, I'm just kidding.
I refuse to answer that.
So actually, as we move from the server to the cloud service, I'm just curious if we're going to need to be beefing up any cybersecurity issues here with that, since everything's going to be...
I will defer to the expert here.
I mean, I guess I'm asking what's our encryption going to look like?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, good evening. Steve Rennell from BSNA Software. So actually, one of the nice things about this is this is hosted in Microsoft Azure, which is an environment that Microsoft provides that virtually thousands, tens of thousands of customers use to host their software. So although BSNA has cybersecurity experts, we also rely on Microsoft and some of their cybersecurity experts, so that essentially, when we're providing this service to you and Microsoft is providing some services to us, we're leveraging that cybersecurity expertise amongst the thousand clients that we have. So when we have one or two or five experts that can go out and really understand the environment for security and ransomware risks and all those concerns, we can afford to hire people that are knowledgeable and extremely expensive because we share that cost amongst all of our customers. So what really happens is you guys don't have to have that expertise because it's our responsibility to provide that, and really, all you guys have to do is just have the ability to access and log in.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I was asking, if we needed to worry about beefing up that. Also then, I guess, and this would probably go to Casey, but hardware, it sounds like we might have some cost savings down the road, too, if we have to have less server interaction here. I'm bringing everybody down the aisle today.
That's fine.
Evening.
I'm trying to help Mr. Hannah take the pressure off.
Sure. Yeah, definitely takes some burden off of both my hardware and my staff because it's a large server to administer it.
Yeah, so that's a potential, too.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I was actually more concerned about the cyber stuff, but...
I got to tell you that the gentleman from BSNA, the patience that he has, because you have to think, a lot of times, these guys are coming in and going, hey, I got cloud-based. And when you do the training, you have a lot of people that are very entrenched in their ways. So I honestly, I don't know how you do it, because I've seen when we did our transition in Northville, it was fun, but it's up and running. Everybody loves it, so. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Donovanick?
I will offer an approving. I'm inclined to offer it for consent, but it is a big contract, and we'll just put it on the reg there.
All right. We've got an approving on regular. Counsel, do you have any more questions? I'm going to go to the audience. Audience, have any questions on BSNA? Seeing none? You have an approving on regular?
Thank you very much.
We will see you on the 3rd. Oh, no, 17th, I'm sorry. Today's the 3rd. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is a request to execute the 2024 agreement between the City of Livonia and SMART. This comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission to allow Livonia Community Transit Program to receive the municipal and community credits in the amount of $89,424. Good evening. How are you?
Hello. Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yes, I'm here for the approval of the municipal credit contract. This is an annual contract that we agree with, or put up against, sorry, deal with SMART on, and they help administer this contract, and it's $89,424 this year, and these funds help us fund our program.
Sounds good. Thank you. Counsel? Councilwoman Bezinski?
Yes, I'll motion for it to be on consent. I know that this is an annual action and more of a housekeeping issue than anything else.
So we have an approving on consent. Anything further from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on consent. You did well. Thanks for hanging out with us. If you want to come back on the 17th, you can, but it's probably not as fun.
Okay.
Have a good one.
Okay.
Audience, seeing none? We'll move on to item number nine, which is a request to approve specialized services operating assistance program, third-party contract for the period of October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024, between the City of Livonia and SMART. This comes to us again from Livonia Housing Commission, with grant funds to be used for the Livonia Community Transit Program to provide lift-equipped transportation to the senior and disabled residents of this city. The floor is yours again.
Okay. Again, another annual contract between the City of Livonia and SMART, and these funds specifically go for our lift-equipped vehicles and providing transportation for those disabled and our senior population. And we're very thankful for these funds.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bezinski?
Yes, I will motion to put that on consent as well, but also, since we have you here, could you give us an update on service for the Livonia Community Transit? I know in the past, you know, there'd been the issue with having enough drivers, and then there was a pay increase. How's ridership request going, if you are able to answer that?
A little bit. We just, in, was it April 8, I believe, was the date, we went with the new software, VIA, and we have seen an increase in ridership. Right now, we still have the same amount of drivers and the same amount of buses, so our capacity isn't much larger. But with the software, we're able to handle a little bit more passengers. So we're seeing a little bit of an increase there.
Great, thanks.
Anything further from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on consent?
All right, thank you.
Nice work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to item number 10, which is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from a sole... to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from a sole source provider. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a stormwater, water main, and sanitary manhole-related items in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand annually for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. Mr. Roraf, how are you?
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having me. Don Roraf, D P W. As you mentioned, this is a contract that we've brought before you for years. This is East Jordan, which is three, four years ago switched their name to E J. They are the sole supplier of the city's fire hydrants, water main valves, sanitary and storm covers and frames. We have checked with other communities on our pricing that's been provided. All the pricing is in line with other communities for comparable products. As you all know, and I'm sure are quite aware of, it would be quite costly for us to switch away with all the castings and the things that they do and move to a company outside of Michigan. They do a fabulous job for us. So we are here tonight looking for counsel's approval for from budgeted funds, a one-year contract not to exceed the hundred and fifty thousand dollars with E J. USA, also requesting counsel to waive the formal bidding process and the code ordinances as amended. So no advantage would be result resulted from competitive competitive bidding in this situation. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Roraf. Counsel? Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. And Mr. Roraf, this is the, again, we've done this many times. This is manhole covers. They say City of Livonia, they cover the sewers, fire hydrants and other ancillary parts and what have you, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And we go with E J. A lot just because they're local-ish and they do a good job. And a lot of our infrastructure we already have, they've they've built and it just, everything kind of plugs in place, so to speak.
Yeah, that's that's correct. Yes.
And to their apartment tearing or law, do we need two motions for to waive that item? Or do we just need one motion then?
Oh, no, 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 no. This is just this wave in the sealed bid process. Your motion would carry.
Yeah. I'll like to make an approving on consent. No objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent. Anything further from counsel? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. All right, Mr. Roraf, you got that one. We'll move on to item number 11, which is a request for authorization to purchase two dump trucks through the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. This comes to us from Public Works for the use by the Roads Department. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. As you've stated, we are requesting approval for two dump trucks to be purchased through the Rochester Hills Co-op Agreement, which meets the finance ordinance for the city. Wolverine Freightliner is the approved vendor for the chassis and Truck and Trailer is the approved vendor for the upfitting for these vehicles. These trucks will be used as frontline pieces of equipment for our snow and ice control program, as well as all other jobs through the summer and other parts of the year. These trucks will be replacement vehicles, will not increase our fleet. The old trucks will be disposed of through the auction process. And the department requests counsel to approve the purchase of these two single axle dump trucks from Wolverine Freightliner with the upfitting provided by Truck and Trailer for a total cost of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents from budgeted funds.
Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
Uh, anything?
Do the amount of that, let's put it on the regular.
Regular? Okay. So we have an approving on regular. Anything further from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right, Mr. Roraf, you got that on regular. Let's move on to item number 12, which is an award of contract. Comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the Maintenance Service Contract for Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation for a period of three years with an option to renew an additional two-year. Mr. Roraf?
Thank you. The department has used sewer lining for about the last 12 years. We've performed preventative and emergency repairs with this. We've also used a variety of different methods from open cut, full length, and spot lining historically to perform some of these repairs. The aging infrastructure has become and will continue to be a major focus for us. We have found that the quickest and least intrusive means of repair is with pipe relining. The relining of these pipes not only restores the pipe's structural integrity, but also reduces the amount of maintenance needed on these pipes moving forward. This process has been extremely successful in relining and repairing our sanitary sewers, and we would like to continue using this process and this method moving forward. The department went out and sought competitive bids. We received three qualifying bids. The department requests counsel to award a three-year contract to the low bidder, S A K Construction, with the option to extend an additional two years upon mutual agreement. Work will be completed from the line item pricing provided, not to exceed the annual budgeted amount, and this will be on an as-needed basis.
Counsel? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be happy to offer an approving on the regular just because the cost is so high. But this is definitely needed.
We have an approving on regular. Anything further from counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Roraf. Have we ever worked with S S A K before? I've never seen their name before.
We have not worked with them in the past. This is a great contract to talk about, I guess, but we've started originally 12, 13 years ago with Liquiforce, who was purchased by another company, who was purchased by another company. So we're kind of with the fourth generation of all of the employees, for the most part, that originally started with Liquiforce. But S A K has a lot of that. We're very comfortable with the workforce that they have and the work that they've performed for us. So answer your question directly. No, we haven't worked with S A K directly, but we've worked with the employees a lot.
Other people. And then, so again, just to reiterate, this is kind of like a lining. They line the inside of the pipes?
Inside of sewers. That's correct. Turet-in-place lining. So a lot of times, we're doing manhole to manhole. If we've got stress fractures, we've got potholes, we've got leaky joints that it just makes more sense to reline the pipe than to go in and grout them. That's a lot of what we're doing.
And it saves a lot of headache for our residents because now we're not in their backyards or front lawns, tearing stuff up, redoing driveways, redoing gardening and all sorts of things like that.
Absolutely. It's it's by far the best method that we've found.
Yeah, money well spent. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
So we have an approving on regular. Anything further from counsel? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number 13.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Roraf. The next item, number 13, is a request to amend the contract with O H M Advisors. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the Construction Engineering Services for the 2024 Water Main Replacement Project from Harrison Road Harrison Road and Westfield Avenue from the unexpected fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund to be reimbursed by the proceeds of the Drinking Water Revolving Fund Revenue Bonds. What an acronym there. Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes. Thank you, Council President and City Council members. As you've just recently approved in a regular meeting, we had plans done in-house by Dave Lear, the Assistant City Engineer. So it did a big savings for for us. That's a $3.2 million job you guys just approved. We're looking forward to having O H M. Jessica Katers here to sponsor that C E, Construction Engineering portion. They've done a lot of work in the city in the amount of, let me just double check here, $262,900 again for this project, looking to start sometime in mid or early July, shortly after the 4th of July, and complete this fall. So by October 31st. Again, looking for your approval for O H M in that amount to provide the C E construction portion of this project and again, improve our infrastructure, aging infrastructure. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to see we're working with O H M. They do a phenomenal job. Jessica Katers and her entire team there. They are very familiar with our systems here and our Engineering Department, Mr. Lear, Mr. Zalinsik, and all the above. So it's nice to see them continuing this work. I know we talked earlier about water main breaks and and that loss of water. By replacing some of these water lines, we'll only minimize those losses. And I'm happy to see that O H M will be helping us. So I'd like to offer an approving and place this on consent. No objection from my colleagues.
We've approved it on consent. Anything further from counsel? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We have an approving on consent for item number 13. We're going to move on to item number 14, which is an award of contract. Comes to us from the Engineering Division for the interior renovations at the Robert and Janet Bennett Civic Center Library from the unexpected fund balance of the library fund. Mr. Lear, how are you?
Great. How are you doing today?
Good. Tell us a little about this one.
So in an effort to upgrade our library, we're going on a multi-phase agenda to try and address shortcomings and bringing up to date with the newest kind of strategies and things for the library. Back in 2022, you approved a contract for D L Z to do architecture and engineering services for the atrium roof replacement. Since the library will most likely have to be closed for a short time during that work, we're also looking to do interior renovations on a number of different items in the, kind of listed out in the proposal in the packet. And we're asking for the approval of a contract with D L Z for $103,000 to include all the architectural and engineering for the interior renovations so that we're not basically having two different architecture firms working on the same project at the same time over at the library. If you have any questions on the renovations or things, items to be done, Kristin Edson, the library director, is here as well.
Sounds great. No, counsel, Councilwoman Bozinski?
Yes. So I'm I'm very excited to have this come before us and moving forward specifically that we've extended to include ground floor bathrooms to making them ADA compliant. And I just want to clarify that when we're using the word ADA compliant, do we mean wheelchair accessible? Or is that what we're looking for, to make sure that a wheelchair can fit, that the door is open appropriately?
Yes. Yeah. And not with this one, it's not just the main floor. They're also going to be doing the second floor as well.
Fantastic. And it would be too early to have a possible timeline on the bathroom piece specifically. I mean, I understand it's all going to kind of come together.
Yeah, I mean, this is the very beginning of it. So I think they they do have a timeline in there for getting the plans together, taking it out for bids, getting a contractor. We're hoping to be able to start work by the end of the year. Obviously, the earlier the the better, we all hope for, but and realize most likely it's going to be end of the year by the time everything gets brought together and brought back in for you.
Okay. And so then to to touch on the other big project at the library, which is both the roof and the chillers, how does that fit into this project?
Well, the chiller is separate from the atrium roof and the renovations. The chiller, actually, we ordered the unit itself. There was, we ordered it at the end of February, beginning of March, and there's a 32-week lead time on it. So we are going out for competitive bids for the contractor to do installation of that. That should be hitting the streets. It was supposed to be today, but most likely it's going to be next week to line that up for early to mid-November for when the chiller is supposed to be delivered to the site. The atrium roof, the architect has kind of started getting information together. Once we get this portion of it, they're going to work in earnest to kind of get it all brought in and get the plans and things out for bids to get a contractor. So the the idea is to do the atrium roof and the renovations under the same timeline. The chiller, since that does not affect the roof or the interior of the building, it's more going to be ground-based on the outside and the piping going in through the walls, that can be kind of a separate thing once it shows up. But that work most likely will be done in October and November.
Okay. And so will that put us at a good timeline for the 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 big mammoth thing outside? Because I think that was a two-year contract. That would put us beneath two years if my?
That is correct. And that is paid for through the end of this summer. So basically, once the summer ends, they'll demobilize that, take it away. And then our contractor would be doing all the groundwork, getting the pad and everything set up for the permanent one. And in a perfect world, everything just rolls one right after another. And I'm sure everything will work out perfectly.
That's not exactly, giving us all the confidence on that. But I'm going to believe in you.
From construction.
I'm going to will it. We're going to get this going. So.
I mean, if the chiller comes in earlier than the 32-week timeline, it may be sooner in the year as well. So we're, like I say, we're getting the contractor lined up and they're going to be under the understanding that as soon as that is ready to show up, they'll be ready to put it in the in place and move on to the next project.
Well, did I already ask to put this on consent? Well, I'd like to put it on consent if there's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving on consent. I'm going to go to Vice President and then I'll go to Councilman Donovan.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of piggyback on Mrs. Bozinski's questions around the restrooms, are these or any of them going to be family-friendly type restrooms? Where you could, a parent could take a small child in and? Yeah. So the the intent anyway, but we still have to get into that when we actually start working with architects, is for the first floor restrooms that are closest to the children's area to not only be family-friendly and single-stall restrooms, but to also have available a changing station for the little ones, but also a changing station for an adult because we know that there are several different family situations that people have adults that are within their care as well. So and like Mr. Lear said, the architects recommended that we also do the second floor restrooms in tandem, just because, actually, I found out today because we had an issue on the third floor with our staff restrooms, that a lot of the piping, it pretty much is actually shared because of the old way of doing plumbing. And so we actually had to close our staff restrooms. So it will be greatly beneficial to have that infrastructure updated. So. Fantastic. Also, I guess with the plans, have they been evaluated and approved by like an ADA-certified designer and/or engineer? That again will be done within the process of actually putting together the plans. And I did want to clarify that the plans for the roof project, they actually were ready to go out to bid. So most of that design work is done. It's just the interior design work that would be added in addition to that. So but yes, they they will do all of that. That's their job, not ours. Thank you.
Councilman Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lear and Ms. Edson for being here today. Appreciate it. I know we talking about interior renovations and I've been talking a lot about making our libraries, you know, technologically advanced. When we're talking about, this is really exciting, mind you, changing ceiling tiles, repainting walls, floor tiling, electrical data connections, acoustic mitigation and other finishes. This will have a component for any kind of tech advancement as we go into the future. What are you guys thinking about that?
Well, obviously, adding more data and power to the different floors does allow you the flexibility of being able to turn areas in the building into, you know, we could move the computer tables from the second floor to the first floor. We can have more outlets available for people to charge, to bring their laptops, to bring, you know, their mobile devices and not get caught without a charging cord. Hopefully, it will also, you know, have a slight impact on the speed of the connection to both our Wi-Fi access points and any hardwired devices that we have. But that's the the main component that would have an impact. And I'm certainly hoping that they're going to look at connections into the actual building because, again, no real upgrades that I'm aware of have happened to the infrastructure of the building and it is over 30 years old. And so things require a lot more power. People require a lot more power. And, you know, the connection to the actual data connection into the building, I want them, you know, to look at that as well so that perhaps we can have a little bit more efficiency to get a higher-speed connectivity into the building.
Yeah, that's great. I was watching a series on 60 Minutes and talking about the technologies coming. And and with your experience, you know this better than anybody, libraries are changing. And it'd be a shame to spend this money in our library and close it down for a period of time and rip up walls and ceilings and not kind of look into upgrading the I T and whatnot in the building. How long do you think? I mean, I know it's kind of early. Any idea, you know, two weeks, a month, three months? Any idea? Is it too early to say?
I think it's probably too early to say, but I am going to be very adamant that we open the building as soon as we possibly can, back to public service and phase it in a way that, you know, whatever is going to impede people's ability to access the building, get as much of that done and then reopen and probably still construction going on on the second and third floors. Not as much construction is going to be going on on the third floor because number one is pretty small. But so that will definitely be in the forefront of conversations that we have with architects.
It's very exciting. Looking forward to the library enhancements. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have an approving on consent. Counsel, anything further? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You said 30 days. We'll see it get done. I'm messing with you. Thanks. These are good, exciting improvements to the city.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 15 is an award of contract from the Engineering Division for Phase Three of the D P W Security Camera Installation from Budgeted Funds. Mr. Lear?
Yeah. I guess I'm doing catch-all today.
You're doing good.
Yeah. So in an attempt to make our D P W compound more secure, over the past couple of years, we've been doing fencing and security camera installations. Prior to that, we had a lot of people cutting fences and breaking in and stealing catalytic converters, equipment, things like that. This would be the third phase of the camera portion of it. things like that. This would be the third phase of the camera portion of it. And so far, we've got coverage on the north, east, and west side. So this is mainly filling in along the south property line, really the only area left that is open to other places where people would access it. Much like last year, we are right around the $50,000 range. We're looking to approve a contract with a combination of advanced security and RCI electric for a total of $50,158.28. And that would basically, like I say, fill in a lot of the southern property line and just miscellaneous items. As a note, on the last year's phases, we actually were able to get $25,000 back in MMRMA grants. And Doug Moore checked today, and they have still roughly $24,000 left in their overall pot that he will be applying for, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that on this section as well.
Leveraging those wrap grants.
Yes.
Councilman Jolly?
I'll offer an approving for consent that makes sense. I'm just curious, will these cameras relay the feed to the police department?
Yes. I mean, yeah, they, they, it's, it's all the same company, and it is all combined. So I'm not exactly sure which ones they're, if they're watching any of ours. It is backed up, so if we have issues, I know we've, we've pulled feed off it for other investigations that they've had. But I think they also have the ability to tap directly in or pull up the feeds directly from their side.
It just seems like that would be much more valuable, given the nature of when these potential situations would happen in the evening when there's nobody on the...
I believe they do have that. I just don't know for sure, just to tell you that, so.
Sounds good. Well, thank you. I'll offer that approving for consent.
Council, anything further? Seeing none? Audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on consent. Nice work. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good night.
We're going to move on to the last item. It's item number 16, a request to amend Council Resolution 017-24. Comes to us from the Department of Law to designate the Director of Finance, Deborah Peck Lichtenberg, as the official representative and voting representative of the City of Livonia at the annual meeting of the MMRMA, which is a Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. Councilman Jolly?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving for consent. This is a housekeeping matter. Mike Slater, the previous voting representative for the City of Livonia to the MMRMA, has retired, and Deborah is taking his place as Finance Director, and this is an appropriate role for the Finance Director for the city. Thank you.
Anything from council? Seeing none? Mr. Crowley, anything? Seeing none? I'm going to go back to the audience. Mr. Crowley, anything? Seeing none? Okay. Good night, Livonia.